Today is Monday, May 1st, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nodosa.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Bucelado.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
We have a form. Thank you so much. At this time, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Time, we'll go ahead and we will open up our first call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to the three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have a request to speak from Mrs. Shelley Robinson with the Florence Women's Club.
Hi. Again, I'm Shelley Robinson. I'm second vice president of the Women's Club, and I'm sure you remember me. Two weeks ago, I was here asking for your support for our upcoming Denim and Diamonds Ball. And I just wanted to make a point of coming back and saying thank you. The council was in, the mayor was very supportive. We just really appreciate that. We appreciate buying tickets, buying auction items, spreading the word about the event. So we just, I wanted to come back and publicly say thank you because that was really an encouragement to the whole club. So thanks so much.
Well, thank you so much as well. Is there anybody online that would like to speak at this time? Go ahead and raise your hand. All right, we'll have you unmuted, Ms. Courtney Ramirez.
She's muted.
Mr. Ramirez, can you please unmute your microphone? All right, we'll have a second call to the public, so we will proceed at that time if you'd like to still talk. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Closing that first call to the public. Oh. Mr. Beatty, come forward, please, and thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Roger Beatty, Greater Forest Chairman of Commerce. I've been up here a couple of times asking the town to shop local, and I see a bunch of things on the agenda tonight where we're going for services and even a tractor. And just wanted to point out that I see in the agenda packet that we did look local, we did price them, and I think, I don't know if it's Mr. Solis, probably is, and just wanted to thank you for at least giving the local businesses a chance to bid. The other bids came in better, so I understand why we're going with them, but it's good to see, and I thank the government for, the town for looking local. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Come forward, please, Ms. Ruiz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'd just like to give out a kudos to the town of Florence staff members who put together the Arbor Day out at our cemetery. That was a really, really nice production. I really enjoyed the children that were out there, and they endured all the heat. I saw Ms. Cortez out there, Mr. Maldonado out there, so thank you all too for joining. And the trees are looking marvelous. I think that's a wonderful idea, and it's a start to hopefully beautification out there, which is so much needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? All right, thank you so much. Without further ado, we'll close the first call to the public, and we'll go to item six, which is our public hearing and presentations. First, we have item A, which is a public hearing to accept citizens' comments on the townwide rates and fees within the schedule and the discussion, approval, disapproval of adoption of Resolution Number 1867-23. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Peneau County, Arizona, adopting a fee schedule and amending the townwide fee schedule of terms, rates, fees, and charges for town services effective June 1st, 2023. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. This fee schedule is a long time coming. As we discussed, we had on February 21st come before the council to ask if we could post a notice of increased fees, and this was done. We've done our 60-day posting, and we posted it on the town website. Because of the size of the fees themselves, they, there were so many that we did not post in the newspaper. It's not really required under the statutes, but we did notify through Facebook on our social media that there was going to be a public hearing on these tonight. So they've been posted quite a while, and even in fact, prior to that, when we were going to go ahead with these fees and then decided to add some other ones in. So this is what's coming before you tonight. These fees, a lot of them have not been increased, I would say, since 2013. And with the costs of living nowadays, and the increase in wages and pricing, and the need for the community to have certain events happen at the Town of Florence, we're coming before you asking to increase these fees. The staff did a phenomenal job. I have about a six-inch binder of their studies. There's a certain way that the state sets out that you can create fees. A lot of these fees were based on time, labor, and supplies that are needed. There are some instances where those things were not available, and we did comparative communities. So they did quite a due diligence on this. So we're asking that we have a public hearing to receive public input, and then asking if you would consider to adopt these fees.
At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that has any questions or comments? Again, if you're online, if you raise your hand, we will have you speak at this time. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Going and closing the first public comment period, and with that, we also need a motion.
Make a motion to approve adoption of Resolution 1867-23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. These fees will become effective on June 1st. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a lot for you to put together, and I really appreciate the way that you've presented. Item B is proclamation declaring Florence's pride and those who have enlisted in the military, and to urge all citizens to continue to support our military service personnel and the families of those who are willing to serve in our armed forces. At this time, I'm going to ask our council. Council's going to line up here. Vice Mayor, will you join me as well? We're going to call the students up in a proclamation. When you hear your name, we're going to have you come around, shake council's hands, receive your proclamation, and then stand in front of the Town of Florence canvas. We are also going to take some amazing pictures of you, and your parents are going to be invited, so this is going to be fantastic. Are you ready? All right. Proclamation supporting Florence youth enlisting in the armed forces. I also see some recruiters in the audience. Could we have you join us up here at this time for the proclamation, please? Hi, gentlemen. How are you this evening?
Good. Thank you for being here. Would you like to say your name?
My name is Sergeant Adonis with the U.S. Army.
I'm Petty Officer Walazowski with the United States Navy, here representing the Navy and the Marine Corps.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Do we have a representative from Florence High School in the audience as well this evening? Or the Florence Unified School Board as well? Principal Haugen, he blended, he wasn't wearing his red today. And Vice President Beatty. Whereas men and women join the military in part because of the benefits the military offers, but more importantly, they join the military to put their lives on the line so the rest of us might live in a safer, freer, more just world. Whereas... You're going to just wait till the whole proclamation is done, and then I'm going to call your names up again, okay? Milton Urbina Valdez, Luis Duarte, Griffin Gallin, Jessica Gutierrez, Sarah McCracken, Sean Prendergast, Tion Timmons, Charles Van Zyle, Patrick Bailey, and Skylar Sharp have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by enlisting in the armed forces. Each will take an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and is ready to stand and defend our great country with honor, courage, and commitment so that we may all enjoy the freedom afforded to each of us. And whereas our military personnel defend us in times of peace, times of war, and times of crisis, both natural and man-made, and render the highest service any American can offer, and is a guardian of freedom and the American way of life. And whereas we are profoundly grateful for this sacrifice that they have chosen to offer each of us, and because of their heroism, we are able to sleep soundly at night, knowing that they are valiantly guarding our freedom. And whereas we must also remain committed to support our men and women who have grown up in our community and are part of our communal family in order to ensure that they have what they need in order to complete their missions wherever they may be. We must also commit to supporting the families they leave behind and supporting them when they return home. Now therefore be it resolved that I Tara Walter, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim Florence's pride and those who have enlisted and urge all citizens to continue to support our military service personnel and the families of those who are serving in our armed forces. At this time, we're going to call our youth up. Milton Urbina Valdez.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Luis Duarte.
Thank you for representing us and giving us attention.
Griffin Gallin. Jessica Gutierrez.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Hi, guys. Sarah McCracken. Sean Prendergast.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
They're quiet but mighty. Tion Timmons. Charles Van Zyle. Patrick Bailey.
Yes, please. I would like to thank, I would like to thank the Town of Florence for this high commendation and their continued support of the United States Armed Services.
And Skylar Sharp. Principal Haugen, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, first of all, start by thanking the Town of Florence and the mayor's office and the council for recognizing our youth. And I have to say, as an educator, it's humbling to watch young men and women come to us as young men and women, and boys and girls, really, their freshman year, and as they reach their senior year, then answer that call to service and to really kind of be in charge and protecting our country. And so it's very humbling as an educator to watch these young people grow and mature and take on that responsibility. So thank you very much for what you're about to do. Appreciate that.
I have you guys scooch in together. One big FHS family. Can we have the recruiters join in? Can I have you all take two steps forward? Council and FUSC is going to go in behind you guys, so that way you guys are the highlight. And then we're going to take a five-minute break and have parents come up as well and take some pictures with families. Passing this up to the first recruiter, all the way over to my right. He's going to introduce, talk a little bit about his branch, and then we're going to pass the microphone all the way to the left, and each member of our youth will talk about what branch they have chosen, and if they want to, they can also select why.
First of all, thank everybody for having me. I'm Sergeant Adonis, like I said before, with the U.S. Army. I think the reason our branch is the best, I mean, we are the biggest, we're the first made, and we have over 150 career paths that the applicant gets to choose from. To, he makes the decision on what he wants to do along with the contract link. He gets to pick where he goes and things like that. So this is my future soldier, Milton Urbina.
The reason I chose the Army was because it was, gave me more opportunities. It allowed me to be more condensed with my contract and figure out what exactly I wanted to do. Presented me lots of jobs, and it's just the best.
I joined the U.S. Navy. I joined because it targets a lot of my values and what I want to do as a man, and that's it.
I chose the U.S. Navy.
I chose the U.S. Navy because my dad did 20 years, and I take great pride in what the Navy has done for my family and I, and I would like to serve my country.
I chose the United States Navy just talking with the recruiters. It seemed like the best fit for me for the values and the things they can offer me.
I chose the U.S. Navy first because most of my family's from the Navy, and it just felt right for me.
I chose the United States Marine Corps for their pride and excellence.
I chose the Marine Corps for the reason of being the first Marine in my family and to try to make my family proud just.
Once again, my name is Petty Officer Walazowski with the United States Navy. Thank you, Mayor, for having me here tonight, and I just wanted to say, I mean, I'm sure you guys know what the Navy is, but I just wanted to congratulate all these young men and women. I know a handful of them couldn't be here, but I wanted to congratulate you all on your choice to join the Navy, make that commitment, and just wanted to say that I've seen an extraordinary amount of growth in all of my future sailors here. Each one of them had something to work on to get to where they are today, and I'm extremely proud of all of you.
One more round of applause for our future soldiers. Families, if you would like to come up and take any photos with your children, enlistees, relatives, we're going to take a few-minute break if you wanted to do that. On our next agenda item, we would like to ask the following to join us. Could we please have Mari come up? She is the staff liaison. Could we please have Shelley come up? She's with the Greater Florence Women's Club, who just recently had a fundraiser, and they've been actively reaching out to our representatives to get some grant funding, matching grant funding, to restore the Greater Florence Women's Club, which at one time was the town hall for the town of Florence. Can I also have Mr. Roger Beatty come up? Mr. Beatty also works with a lot of our businesses and is a Masonic member, who also helps with a lot of coordinating for restorations in the town of Florence. The Town of Florence Proclamation for Historic Preservation Month. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973, to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. Whereas the Town of Florence recognizes May as Historic Preservation Month. Whereas Historic Preservation Month can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks to the residents of Florence and the surrounding area. And whereas the Historic Preservation Month can promote the region's largest source of heritage tourism, Florence Downtown Historic District, located in the town of Florence, Arizona, and whereas the Historic Preservation can generate excellent community discussion, uniting residents for a well-worthy cause. Whereas the Historic Preservation has been shown nationally to create jobs, stabilize property values, and preserve historic buildings. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Florence, Arizona, does recognize that May 2023 is National Historic Preservation Month, and hereby proclaim May 2023 as Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the residents of the town of Florence to recognize and participate in a special observance. Ms. Mari, would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to thank everyone who supports our Historic District and the preservation and rehabilitation of the buildings within the town of Florence. It is great to see the growth over the almost five years I've been here, and it makes me happy to see how it brings the community together.
I'm going to actually present this to you, and you can keep this on file. Ms. Robinson, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I just want to thank the town of Florence, as I did earlier. Preserving the historic flavor of Florence is just critical. It's essential. And I think the more that we do that, the more Florence will be placed on the map as a destination place to visit.
Agreed.
My turn, too?
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to thank the town. You guys have done a great job of promoting the local Main Street, and it's really shown in the last even five, it's even in the last three years, have made a big difference to the businesses and to the town as a whole. And it's really grown and brought a lot of people to the whole town as a whole, excuse me, the town as a whole. So I thank you for your support of the preservation, and I hope we can continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Let's all scooch together and get one big, happy Historic Florence Preservation picture. On our next item, I would like to invite our Community Services Director up, as well as our lifeguards from the town of Florence. They are loving this. 2023 National Water Safety Month. All right, who wants to be the recipient of this? Come on over. All right. All right, you ready, guys? 2023 National Water Safety Month. Whereas the citizens of the town of Florence recognize the vital role that swimming and aquatic-related activities relate to good physical and mental health, and enhance the quality of life for all people. Whereas the citizens of the town of Florence understand the essential role that education, regarding the topic of water safety, plays in preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries. Whereas the town of Florence is aware of the contributions made by the recreational water industry, as represented by the Association of Pool and Spa Professionals, the National Recreation and Park Association, and the World Water Park Association in developing safe swimming facilities, aquatic programs, home pools and spas, and related activities, providing healthy places to recreate, learn, and grow, build self-esteem, confidence, and sense of self-worth, which contributes to the quality of life in our community. And whereas the citizens of the town of Florence recognize the ongoing efforts and commitments to educate the public on safety issues and initiatives by pool, spa, waterpark, recreation parks, industries, and... Whereas the citizens of the town of Florence understand the vital importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to water parks. Therefore, I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as National Water Safety Month. Ladies and gentlemen, our Aquatics Center is going to be opening. Round of applause for all these fine individuals that will be protecting everybody and keeping everybody safe. We're going to turn it over. You want to tell us a little about what's coming up this season?
Hello, everyone. So we have our Water Safety and Family Resource Day that will be on our opening day. That's May 27th. That'll be from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then we also have registration open for all of our summer activities. One that we'll highlight today will be our swim lessons. We do offer that in morning and evening. So go ahead and hop on and register.
Round of applause. Oh, yes, let's do that. Ready? Come on up. Want to come stand over here? Thank you, guys! So I have a little background for everybody. Did you know that April 30th to May 6th, 2023, is the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week? Mrs. Lisa Garcia, come on up. So this April 30th to May 6th, this is going to be the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, initiated in 1969 by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, the IIMC, and endorsed by all of its members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries. The week is a time of celebration and reflection on the importance of the clerk's office. The IIMC prepares its members to meet challenges of the diverse roles of the municipal and deputy clerk by providing services and continuing professional development opportunities to benefit members and the government entities they serve. Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of their duties through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. Mrs. Lisa Garcia previously served as the IIMC Regional 13 Director and now serves as the IIMC Vice President, and in May will be sworn in as the incoming president. Before I read this proclamation, I want her to share her experiences and have a little speaking time.
I can tell you that as a member, first, I've been with the town of Florence since 1994, and I've been humbly serving our community. I believe there is no better profession than that of the municipal clerk. And right now, I have the best team in the world. This is Ian, this is Patricia, and they're great and valued members of our team. As a Vice President of IMC, I do travel around. I talk about the professional clerk. I talk about the role we play and the importance of the professional clerk. It wasn't so long ago where clerks were considered glorified secretaries. They were paid at the bottom of the scale. It's through getting out the word about what a clerk does that we promote the profession. And it does bring the transparency into government. It does bring the record-keeping into government. If you want to know what any of our lovely elected officials are doing, you can just ask a member of the clerks. We make sure that we post notices of quorum. We make sure that we know where our community is, and we make sure that we are providing meeting management skills to not only our town council, but to the boards and commissions as well. So ever want to know something great about government? Ask a clerk.
Okay. So at this time... I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, do recognize that the week of April 30th through May 6th, 2023, is Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend the appreciation of our Professional Municipal Clerk team, Lisa Garcia, Patricia Buchanan, and Ian Newcombe. And to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services that they perform, exemplary dedication to the communities in which they serve. Let's give them a round of applause. One more round of applause. This next one is also my favorite. We have our Outstanding Employee Recognition Program, and every month we are able to select an outstanding employee in the town of Florence. The Outstanding Employee Recognition Program Award for the month of April 2023 recognizes Michael Mono Lopez for his outstanding contributions to our organization, and celebrates these achievements with Mike, his coworkers, and his family. Come on up, Mono! Congratulations. So tell us a little bit right now, before I talk to you about who nominate, well, I don't really know who nominate. Yeah, there you go. We're going to talk him up right now, and then I bet you he's going to want to talk by the time we're done. So the award is given based on employee nominations that are submitted to the EIC, which is the Employee Incentive Committee. And when everybody hears each nomination, based on the criteria within the program policy, they select the monthly winner of the award. Every employee is recognized, and they will be receiving a $75 gift certificate to a local business of your choosing, and a certificate that you will receive at our amazing town council meeting, where we are honoring you this evening. This is what the following had, this is what coworkers had to say about Mike's contribution to the work environment. Ah, I'm pretty sure it was. Ready? Are you ready to hear what they had to say? Okay. I am anticipating tears, guys. A little bit of tears here. "To whom it may concern, I would like to have Michael Mono Lopez recognized for his years of service to our community. Mike has a stellar work ethic and is one of the humblest individuals. No matter where he is seen in the community, he is always on task, and you will not catch him not working, ever." That means you're always working. You're always doing a good job. "Mike came to work for the town of Florence in April of 2004. He hit the ground running as the department was down two maintenance workers, and he has kept that pace ever since. Mike has become the leader of his crew and is well-respected among his coworkers. Mike fills in wherever he is needed. He never complains, and he gets the job done. He is involved in all the daily duties of parks' maintenance, including but not limited to mowing, trimming, hedging, general cleanup, and making sure that all parks from post-imbute to the cemetery are ready for citizens to enjoy. Mike is well-known to the community, and anyone who knows him will tell you that he is the hardest worker and takes pride in his contributions to the town. Mike has taken several parks and playground courses to increase his knowledge and has received his landscaping maintenance certificate along with his coworkers. Mike is an integral part of the town of Florence." Mike is an integral part of the Town of Florence team and its ability to provide top-shelf service to the community." Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
All right, here's your... Certificate of Excellence. Ready? We're at least gonna get a picture with you. For the record, and Mono. All right. Item G is Presentation of the Retail Industry and Workforce Analysis for the Town of Florence Prepared by Rounds Consulting Group. Mr. Harvey Kraus.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, if you want to get it. Thanks, Chris. In January of 2022, the Town Council entered into a professional services agreement with Rounds Consulting to prepare an economic analysis for the town focusing on workforce demand, targeted industries, development opportunities, as well as how the community could take advantage of the economic activity and momentum that is occurring in Pinell County and the region. And I've been working with Jim over the last several months to complete this study, analysis. And he is here this evening to provide an overview of the findings. I just want to let you know that Jim has been, he's a native from Arizona. He's worked in the valley and Pinell County for many years. He has a relationship with Arizona Commerce Authority, GPAC, and he has an excellent grasp of what is occurring in Pinell County and the state of Arizona in terms of economic development. So I'm pleased to present Jim Rounds, who can, will provide an overview of the analysis this evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This has been such a fun night. Are you sure you want to have an economist come up and possibly ruin it? Normally, it doesn't take so long to do reports. And like Harvey said, this was something that was started beginning of last year. Originally, we were engaged to do just kind of a high-level strategic plan. And you have to put the word "strategic plan" in quotes because it could be a lot of different things. And then after, it was put on hold for a little bit, and we started talking with Harvey. And what was encouraging is that we were saying this, the scale really doesn't need to be a strategic plan. You don't really need another general guide for what you can do. You have a good feel for where the community can go. It's really a to-do list. And so we had a lot of conversations about what are some practical things to do? What are some things that we could look at that could provide some immediate results? What are some things that we can look at where you can partner with other groups immediately? Then you have midterm and long-term. But myself and a lot of other people that work in economic development have years of experience doing these strategic plans. They're usually very expensive, 150, 200 pages long. And they end up really not telling you a whole lot. And so the real approach going forward, and I would encourage you all to do the same thing, is keep it simple. Participate with a consultant. Don't just go out and say, "We need you to tell us what to do," because usually you have a good idea where it needs to go. It's just having a partner on the outside that can help refine it. And so that's where we shifted it with Harvey. So it was a, it was an enjoyable experience. So again, it has to be a to-do list. The strategic plans, I bet if you went to your offices, or at least if staff did, you could probably find 10 or 15 strategic plans of some form that the little binding wasn't even cracked on, cracked open because the documents weren't reviewed. It's really an iterative process. It's really something where you want to keep working on with people. And also, before, it used to be, how do we prepare for something that's going to happen? What's a forecast for the next 10, 20 years? And again, it's just, what do we need to do? What do we need to operate? How do we need to operate? And that's how a business would have to operate. And you can't run government like a business, but you can bring in some of those principles we found. You can fund things that tend to provide a higher ROI than others. It helps you kind of sift through the different possibilities. And that's what we started bringing to the state capital. And it worked really well because at cross-party lines, we didn't have to worry about politics when we said, "If we invest in education and workforce in this particular program, it's going to cost $32 million, but within five years, it's going to provide $128 million in general fund revenue." High ROI, a business would have invested in that. And at cross-party lines, but that's the way we have to think about some of these things. It's better to think about specific projects. It's better to think about specific partnerships. And it's better to think about not just saying, "How can we be a part of this bigger momentum with batteries and electric car manufacturers?" That's part of it, but exactly how? Who do we have to approach? Who do we need to talk to? What are the specific opportunities? And so we did a lot of that math in the analysis. And really, in the, as just a little preview, early on, it's going to be a little bit more about participating and trying to attract some of those spin-off businesses. So initially, you're not going to be landing a major supplier to one of the, like to Lucid or one of the others, but down the road, you might. That'll operate like a base sector industry. But early on, when you do these analyses and you see these studies where they say 100 jobs or 200 jobs in a particular business generates another 300 or 400 jobs because of that multiplier effect. When you look at the different industries that are impacted, you can break this down into 30 or 40 different categories. It hits restaurants, it hits all sorts of different things. And what's key for communities like Florence is to have a solid budget. Having a balanced budget is an economic development tool with a lot of communities that people forget. And so there's going to be some challenges coming up with this business cycle change. So that's part of the economic development plan. But taking a look at where might you want to invest those limited dollars? Where do you get that positive ROI? Because when you're more limited, you have to generate as much revenue as possible so that you can put in the infrastructure, so you can participate in some of these things. And what I found, and much like how I have to operate my business, it, we're efficient because we're small, but we have a lot of different experts that we bring into projects. If we need somebody on an environmental issue, bring in a particular person. Something on transportation, a particular person. As you're working on these projects, there's nothing wrong with bringing in some expert or some partners, whether it be the county, which will be great opportunities in many cases. But how do you maintain the workforce? What are you going to do about housing? And then do a little bit of background research as well. And so like with housing, there's a lot of stuff going on with that, and we can discuss that at the end if you want a briefing because we've been involved with it. We've worked with cities, we've worked with developers, and we've worked with the league. We've produced several reports, and we're trying to help negotiate what's happening. But what would your role be? What would be the best thing that could be produced that would help you all? Because if you work on getting the workforce ready, they're going to have to have places to live. You're going to have to have good infrastructure. You're going to have to have amenities. Some of my colleagues in some of the economic development meetings that have been in Pinell County, and many of you participated in, or your staff did, talked about economics is really efficient. The retailers know where there's an opportunity to expand. They don't have perfect information. Sometimes you have to promote something as simple as, "This is how we're going to be growing. This is a great opportunity to bring some extra things in." And so that's one of the biggest fallacies when it comes to the economic theory that somebody will say. They'll say, "You don't need to worry about looking at retail. They have perfect information. They know exactly how you're developing." You think they're out here doing separate studies on their own, trying to figure out if maybe another retail establishment would be out there? No, you need to have economic development team. You have to have policymakers out there advocating for it. It's got to be a team effort. So it sounds like a lot of work, and it is. But it's work that pays off. It's not just some of the pretend-government work where we say, "Let's study different things." It's, "This is going to pay dividends." And it's not just now, it's having that legacy item for down the road. How can you set up the community for even beyond your terms and going into the next one? And when you do it well, it's kind of like compound interest. We call it compound economic development. Where if you do it right, it really does have an upward-sloping curve. So that's my little bit of a prologue to this. The presentation, you all have it. It's very narrative-oriented. So I went through, and I just wanted to highlight a few specific items so that we have more time to discuss things at the end. And so like I said, cross-border, probably should have said cross-boundary. But how do we take a look at the different items? So we know that there's a lot going on in Pinell. We've even done a lot of the economic impact studies for some of the bigger projects. But there's more opportunities to grow. And so we have the things that you've heard about, but then we have pipeline projects. How do we make sure that not just what's going into the ground now and the things that you're hearing about, but how might some of the future expansions? Are there opportunities for you? What do you need to do to get set up, but in a reasonable way? You can't just go into debt in case something might happen. And that's a tough thing because you have to, it's almost like that whole inventory theory, where just-in-time inventory, you, you know, you buy stuff and you keep it in inventory for a short amount of time, then you send it back out. It's kind of just-in-time economic development where you can't be spending a ton of money putting in infrastructure that might not pay dividends and give you a return for 10 years out. You have limited resources. So you have to really figure out where that high ROI item is. And you'd be surprised the extent that a lot of the public policy, whether it's infrastructure, other things like that, can be calculated. You can monetize it. You can say, "If this is going to expand, if this particular road is going to expand business by a tenth of a tenth of a percent, it's going to pay for it." Let's say we didn't know what kind of economic benefit there was going to be from that kind of investment. But would it be reasonable to say that minuscule increase in economic activity would pay for it? Yes. So sometimes you have to reduce these things to the absurd. You have to figure out, does it sound reasonable? In other cases, you can calculate how you can pay for these things. When it comes to infrastructure, we did some work with MAG and the League of Cities on value capture related to infrastructure investment. And that basically ties economic development to well-planned transportation-infrastructure projects. Well, essentially, they don't, they can pay for themselves in the long term, but in the short term, you can either, one of the examples that we did, just for example, is the freeway that went around South Mountain. If we employed some of these value-capture techniques, so the economic benefits coming in, we either could have reduced costs by 20% or expanded the infrastructure that we put in by a similar percent. That's the kind of sophistication we need. And it's, we're not trying to land on the moon. We're just trying to do some basic math. But we have to really, you have to adopt that philosophy, and you have to be really into, "I want to maximize a community's economic development benefits." But you have to understand that a lot of different things make the economy tick. Typically, what we see with policymakers, less so with the cities, not so much with the counties, but especially the state, is people get hung up on one item. Often, it's, "We want the lowest taxes," or "We want to spend the most on education." And the true answer is you have to find balance. But that balance and that discussion will probably come in during the next expansion. So the best thing that you could probably do right now is, there's a lot of discussion about the business cycle right now, whether or not we're going to go into a recession. So you'll have to be very careful as you do your planning. And I see that there, you always have fiscal topics at each of your meetings anyways to get some briefings. But if we plan these things right, and it's not just individual cities, it's the communities that you might partner with, or the county, the broader region. If it's done well, I feel like the greater Phoenix area, and that includes here, will have one of the best expansions ever after this next downturn. We're still trying to figure out what the next downturn will look like, but the key is to have everything set up where you can move quickly. And the way I'm describing it right now doesn't sound a whole lot different than that strategic plan because I'm being general. But the meat of this stuff is really when you're talking in a meeting, brainstorming with Harvey, talking with you all if you're looking at different projects. If sometimes we'll be promoting you. I'll talk about the film industry opportunities in a little bit. I think I brought up Florence more than any other community when I've talked with the group about whether or not there could be some extra opportunities out here. And then the key in that case would be what would need to be done? Well, there's interest in talking with you all now. So our next step will just be, would you all like to meet with the group that's going to be building some of these studios on the east side, East Valley? And that would then maybe connect into Pinell and maybe include some of what you're doing? Well worth a lunch or, you know, an hour discussion. Those are the things that I always found produce real gains. That's how I go get business. You go out and you have a lunch with somebody, and you brainstorm. You get to know them well, and then you figure out that you can work with them. Same thing with what you do. So that's one of them. On the spin-off jobs, you all know about the multipliers. The challenge that we have with generating all of those extra jobs when you have these businesses located in places like Pinell County and then how you can participate in Florence, is when you see these studies that are calculated and they say, like I said earlier, let's say, let's say 500 jobs, and the multiplier is three, so it'd be 1,500 total. What we found is that these models completely fail in communities that are on the uptick. So with Florence, Pinell County, some of the perimeter communities, if you asked, if you asked 100% of the economic developers in greater Phoenix or in Arizona, "How are multipliers calculated?" There might be two or three that could answer that. How you put it together is you take a look at what the current industry mix is, what kind of inputs are needed? Do we have those businesses that can supply it? If you can supply it, then it means more money gets, bounces around the local community. Now, it's based on historical connections. When you have counties like Pinell County and what's going to be going on here, where it's curving up, they're saying, "Okay, that 500-job base-sector business is going to bring in another 500." But it's not accounting for the fact that there's been a shift. So it's really going to be 1,000. So when we've done modeling, we've had to completely change everything and create our own multipliers because they've been understated. And that's why I feel like some of the opportunities out here are going to be stronger than some of the reports that you've seen because I think that they've been understated by quite a bit. And as more businesses come out here, and I want to talk about environmental technology as well towards the end because I want to, I want to get through this and then talk about what are some action items that we would recommend that you all work on with your team? And then we'll be happy to brainstorm with you at any time going forward when anybody has any questions. Manufacturing is important, healthcare, transportation, all the stuff that you've been looking at. Leisure and hospitality, when we were, when you were previously talking about Main Street and what are some ways of increasing tourism? There are actually some things that you can do in the short term that are low-cost. We ended up teaming up, a good friend of ours, Kimber Lanning, with Local First, teamed up with her, and we did some work in Eloy. And it identified, the purpose was to say, "There's not a lot of money going around, but there's going to be new development coming in. What can we do right now to start establishing a little bit of a vibe so that there's a feel for it? There's more of a feel in a downtown here, but what can we do to expand it? What are some of the other tangential activities that we could bring in to increase that revenue so it can be reinvested?" And some of the things were very simple. Some of it was, "How can we just have a few extra events?" Some of it was, how can we just have a few extra events? Out there, there was discussion about farmers markets and all sorts of things like that. The key is to get people to come downtown. And some of it, you can get grants for some cosmetic related improvements. And we've done work at, I think the first time I did a downtown analysis of Florence was probably about 20 years ago. And it was the same types of things. How can we get more people downtown? How can we improve the look of some of the buildings? There were more businesses, some of it, you know, it has since decayed a little bit, then it's picked up a little bit. It's kind of ebbed and flowed. But I found that there's a lot of grants out there and you're already looking at some of these things. But that combined with tourism activities. How can we increase the tourism activities? Well, maybe we combine it with film a little bit. If we're going to do that, what would be a good way of getting some additional tourism activities into places like Florence? Well, our recommendation to the governor was, we need to spend maybe another 10 or 15 million through the Office of Tourism. And right now, most of that money goes towards advertising in other places like Chicago will see ads of Arizona. People come out and go play golf in Scottsdale or go to Sedona. It's not really targeted towards maybe having an Arizona experience. I'd like to have a bit of a rural component to that. And I'm sure we could show a very positive ROI. So if we were able to convince somebody at the state, let's spend a little bit more on these things. Then we have to figure out, what would your proposition be? How could you be a partner in that? And so that's one that we've been thinking of, that if we, we've already proposed it, but now we have to follow through. So once they get done with Tamale Gate and all the other things that they're discussing at the Capitol, it'll be some of the firmer recommendations like the tourism activity. The others, healthcare, a lot of these things are going to take place later. We're going to have, related to tourism is going to be, there's a lot of people that are going to be retiring, a lot of the baby boomers. We have a lot of physicians that want to retire and, but only partly retire. So we have all these different analyses for the state and especially the rural areas where, how are we going to get healthcare out in these places to not just help the current population, which is something you have to factor into economic development? That's got to be part of it. But then how can you get, leverage that to get others to want to consider coming into an area? How can you participate in, say, a proposal? Another proposal was, we found out that physicians, the reason that they have to fully retire in many cases is that if you're a specialist, you have $100,000 a year insurance policy in case something goes wrong. If you're working seven days a week, you have $100,000 a year policy. If you work two days a week, you have $100,000 a year policy. So one of the ideas that we had was, what if we can create some kind of a statewide, or maybe it can even be at a county level, plan where we can pool these resources? And that person that wants to work two days a week only has to pay the two days a week worth of insurance. They can partly retire. Where would these people like to be able to go to do that? They would love to go to areas that aren't just downtown. They've already been working there before. They would like to locate in places like Florence and other parts of the state that, you know, are charming in certain ways. They may be growing, but there's something unique for them. Well, we have to tie that to the tourism activity too. So now we have healthcare tied to tourism, tied to shortages in certain areas that are going to inhibit our ability to grow. So all of these different things go together. And when we end up drawing all the different opportunities on a whiteboard, at first it started looking like those Olympic rings, those Venn diagrams where you have two circles overlapping. And then we kept drawing circles and we ended up like with 30 of them. And then you have to figure out who's going to participate. Another idea that we were thinking of that could impact you is, there's an effort to try to figure out how we can utilize university activities. So we already have the reliance on community colleges to help with workforce development. There's ways of encouraging economic activity through university activities where we could have research done in the field. When we were working on, and I'm just giving you examples of different things in different parts of the state where they're coming together because it shows that they can work. When we were brought in to help with coal communities up north with the coal fire power plants closing, devastating to the economy. But there's a lot of grants related to environmental technology, which means that some centers may be able to be set up. So for example, up in St. John's, a center that's going to be an education research center combined with a community college. And then it'll have specific, a specific focus. But there'll be federal grant money coming in to help set that up. The community, even though it's St. John's, it's, it takes a while to get there. But it's perfect for some of the things that these universities might want to do. There are things that can be done in Pinal County and in Florence where we have federal monies coming in. And I'm okay with that. People consider me slightly right a center in terms of my political affiliation. I'm all for getting my taxpayer money back to the state. I've already paid it. Sorry, I've been taken out of my check. I want that money to come back. We need to make some good arguments. The best arguments are made by having communities participate in some of these discussions. So as we're getting involved in these environmental tech type issues, we have some potential arguments to get things going up north. Then that St. John's issue is going to become this corridor that runs along 40. Then we're going to combine that with a statewide plan on environmental technology from the top down, which means we're going to need a hub for different technologies in different areas. Somebody is really liking my presentation. That's good to know, starting young. So if we're going to be working on some of these things, yes, we have Lucid. Yes, we have some big battery manufacturers. What would happen if we had, if the environmental technology thing, if the very first item was trying to land a Formula E race in downtown Phoenix? Formula E is just Formula One, but it's the electric cars. Formula One is part electric anyways, they're hybrids. Formula E are very light cars because they run on a battery charge. We're trying to get that race in downtown Phoenix. Why is that relevant? Because they also make Baja E. They're owned by the same company. When we were talking with the state land department, we said, are there places? Are, would there be any restrictions if we wanted to locate Baja E out in, whoops, out in this area? Would there be maybe some R and D that could go along with it? They said absolutely. And so these folks that are going to be coming out when we do the study to locate the Formula E race in downtown Phoenix are going to be looking at maybe some R and D sites in Pinal County and also the Baja component. That's just something that came up because we got connected on this race and we got to know these environmental technology firms, these billionaires from overseas that really want to expand and they want to work in these different areas. All of a sudden, there's a real item that could kind of blend into what this region is. It has an outdoors sports feel. It has, you know, it has its own unique elements in different places. But where I'm seeing the momentum is kind of in that sports, outdoor recreational tourism. If we could bring that in, all of a sudden, you're known for additional things. I used to like to go with a friend of mine, Tim Knebel that passed away. We would go out and go off-roading together. Those are my favorite things to do. That was so cool because we wouldn't just do that, we'd do other things too. We'd stop and get food, take my kid out there and do that now. So you can blend these things together. Then all of a sudden, you have a package for people. Then all of a sudden, you're looking at maybe, do we need some hotel space? Who could be some investors? Maybe these same people that might need hotel space if they're going to be flying people from overseas into looking at this new environmental hub that for this particular piece could be located in Pinal County and in Florence. How do we make that happen? All of these things start to come together when you plan it well. And so on some of these things, we're going to be reaching out to you anyways just because it's projects that we're going to be working on. But isn't that the best kind to be working on where you're not just trying to force something to happen? The economics is already supporting it. And you can participate and it means it doesn't cost as much to participate. You don't have to put in as much money to get something out here. Usually a grant could help. We'll have to talk to Pinal County about that and some others. But again, as we went through this exercise, we had idea after idea after idea, practical ideas. Now, that was beyond the scope of what we were supposed to put in this report. But the report wasn't the important thing. The report was the exercise to get to this list, this to-do list of some things that maybe we can look into. Let me skip a little bit. On film industry, I mentioned that we've been promoting the area. I think that that'll have to be combined with maybe some downtown programs. Are there still monies that are available? I'd really like to talk to Kimber about any low hanging fruit for Florence in that capacity because if we can bring in the tourism component, this environmental tech stuff, all of these things together, we resolve some housing issues. We combine economic development and workforce training. You need everything. We can't just have workforce. Again, you have to have places for people to live. The governor is going to have a lot of money in the housing trust fund. A whole bunch of money was designed to go into it. Not a lot of detailed ideas on how to spend it. So you need to put together these specific ideas. So one of the thoughts is that I had just after brainstorming with Harvey on this after the fact, after the report was done and we were waiting for this meeting was, maybe we should get together and do that to-do list on some of these items. Maybe we need to have a brainstorm meeting, get a room with a whiteboard and let's draw some of the circles up on the board. And let's figure out where you all may fit within some of these different opportunities. And then you take the lead in certain areas. If we can help, if we're already working in some others, you know, love to partner with you all. But we'll have to see where it goes. Film, the, we designed the credit so that the state will always have a positive return on investment. The rules are being written right now, so we have to wait a little bit. There's some discussion about whether something will be available this year. But the studios are already being designed and they'll be built soon. So like I said, that's a meeting that we have to have. But maybe it's worthwhile to have that Venn diagram meeting first. And we include that as one of the discussion topics. And then, like I said, where we can help get, you know, set up some meetings or whatever we can help with. And then you all can go in, you know, close the deal, so to speak, on some of these things. I'm very optimistic about, as long as you don't, I don't want to say this in a negative way. As long as you properly manage the budget through this downturn that'll be coming, which I don't think will be severe in Arizona. I think it's going to be more of a job posting recession than a job loss recession because we've had so many businesses in need of workers. What we're going to see is instead of workers being laid off, we're going to see those job opening signs taken out of the windows. We've had recessions in the past where we've lost very few jobs across the state. Even if this is a moderate, moderate to severe recession nationally, it won't be the same here. And so we're not going to see as many lost jobs, which means it's not going to be hitting your budget as badly. But maybe do some strategy planning because a lot of the extra federal spending and what the Federal Reserve Board has done means that as much as 5 to 10% of your base budget could be temporary, that'll have to be built back up after the downturn. You might want to do some scenario planning on what happens if you lose 5% more than what you're currently forecasting as your base? Or maybe in between, what happens if you lose seven and a half percent? Can you get through it? And, and I emphasize that because being a budget analyst for the state, doing forecasting for different counties and cities, it's amazing that people don't list balancing a budget and properly managing a community as the number one economic development tool that communities have. It really is. I love the idea of having the community-wide branding, the local events and the festivals. But I feel like those need to come after that bigger discussion. And then you home down into specific tasks where you say, Harvey, I want you to look into these three things. I want you to look into these other things. The mayor and the vice mayor are going to be looking at these items. If we can break that down into specific tasks, I think you'll be in good shape. And I know I keep hitting on that, but it's only because I've talked to so many communities about how to be more practical and less government about how you implement things. Not the strategic generic plan, the to-do list. And how many people love the concept at first and then they realize they might have to work a little bit on a Saturday morning. That's not going to work for me. It tends to happen in the bigger cities, not the smaller ones. The smaller ones are usually more motivated and they appreciate recommendations and partnering. So I'm still optimistic about what you all can do here. Talked about that a bit. Let me, let me just get to the final thing. So housing, the latest on housing? I'll be brief in case you have more, more detailed questions. And if you have more detailed questions later and you want to send them to Harvey, he can send them to me and I'll write back and write a little memo answering additional questions if you don't think of anything right now, but you think of something on the way home or whatever. The housing issue, have you ever heard of that show Horizon? That political show at the state? It's on PBS. It's basically the political show that all the politicians watch. So it's like a nice commercial for, I get, I can be a little salty on these things. So I like to go on the show and complain about what's happening at the state. But for some reason, it helps business. I don't know why. But on housing, there's a lot of things that the state wants to do to improve affordable housing, which means they're taking away a lot of your control. I've worked with a lot of communities. And last year, we've worked with now 14 individual communities where we were hired by the developer to get a multifamily project through because the council or staff didn't like it. And we had to show the economics and go through the exercises. And all but two, they were, they passed. And the two that didn't, the developer wasn't being as honest with what they wanted to provide. And so it was, I was actually happy that it didn't. But we have to find that in-between point. And so that's where we worked with the league a little bit. But we do more work with developers than the cities on some of these projects. But you can't just go from saying, you have no, we're going to have no parking requirements for multifamily project at all to, or we, it's excessive, they think in many cases. They're going to say it's excessive. Now we want none. You always have to find something in the middle. I find in politics, on almost all the important policy items that we analyze, there's something in the middle where you find the right balance. So housing, there's a lot of different things we're looking at with zoning and everything else. That'll have to be worked out. But the interesting part is, how can we maybe leverage some of the housing trust fund monies if a good economic argument can be made in order to help a community like Florence as we're getting involved in the stuff that we're talking about? Workforce, you've already talked about this a lot. You have a good handle on what's happening with workforce. There's that need. But we have to figure out where people are going to live. Are they going to want to live here? Are they going to have enough places where they can go out to eat and all the other things? And that's why with the developing communities, I think it's important to even focus on retail. The economist in me says, focus on base sector, the retail comes after. But the person that's actually worked on these projects realizes that you have to try to market the community as well. And marketing for tourism is different than marketing for businesses to locate. Again, nothing's rocket science, but it's, you have to have a solid plan. It's almost like having a little, a little instruction list for each of the different types of groups that you have to go after. I always like to say, leave behind on all of our big studies that we do because I already know that no one's going to read one of our big policy studies. So we usually have a longer executive summary. No one's going to read the executive summary. So I write a synopsis. People will read one page. That's the lead behind. And then when they see that it might be something that can help, then they'll read that next section and they'll go on. No one ever reads the full study. I could probably just put blank pages on page 20 on and no one will notice. But as long as people understand the main points, you're in good shape. Your report has no blank pages in it. I hope not. We talked about the business cycle. The environmental tech is stuff that I want to follow up with your team on a little bit more because this is something that's real. There's, no other states are putting together as comprehensive of a plan for the federal government as what we're looking at to have statewide and then with these individual hubs. And the EDA is looking at what we're going to be doing in Arizona, possibly something they can employ in other states, which means that to help make it work, extra funding will be available. We already had meetings where we pointed to the governor's staff. We want tens of millions of dollars for these types of programs. And then we want to combine that with certain monies from the EDA. There's going to be funding available. But we have to figure out what pieces can we develop here? Getting back to the, that race car example and things like that. Film industry, we talked about. There's other items that can be had, but it's beyond, I think, what would be appropriate for just this meeting. I think though, that there's enough opportunity and we can get a feel for it as we start to review the different communities. We know if, the only thing that's going to fix it is to get a $10 million federal grant for something. With what's happening in Florence, and we know enough about it, we've analyzed Pinal enough. I do feel like there's opportunities for, as you manage through this bit of a slowdown coming up and these opportunities that are still going to come in, I feel like it could be a really different expansion for Florence coming up than what we've seen in the past. And there's different ideas on related to housing and other things like that in the report. But again, from my perspective, the report was the mechanism to try to figure out what are some things that we can brainstorm on and then we go from there. And I'll end it with that if there's any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Rounds, President of Rounds Consulting? Councilmember Larson?
I just want to say thank you, first of all, for putting this all together. Something that, I love numbers and data and analytics, and I love all of that. So all of this is right up my alley, and it's something that also gives, hopefully not just me, but the rest of the community, sort of a, you know, a good bird's eye view of what our future could look like, and some action items, like you said. So I look forward to any type of partnership, working and communicating with you and anyone else who'd be interested in coming to the community. So thank you again.
Great, thanks.
So you have been helping our community for decades, and most recently, you came out on April of 2022, when we had our State of the Town.
That's right, yeah.
Just wanted to say thank you, because you've always been on point with our community. You've always been easily accessible, and I continue to welcome the opportunity to work with you.
Thanks.
And our staff. Our amazing staff is really who you work closely with, but we appreciate it. And I think that you were really on point with all of your targeted areas, manufacturing, healthcare, transportation, warehousing, hospitality. These are all areas that we are actively pursuing, so thank you for that partnership.
Great.
All right. If there's no further questions, if there are additional ones, we will funnel them through Mr. Crowes.
Sounds good. Have a good night.
Thank you, you as well. Next, we have a presentation of the fiscal year 2022-2023 third quarter revenue and expense forecast. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council, we're happy to present the third quarter financial numbers for you. In general fund, our major revenues, of course, are city sales tax, property taxes, building permits, and the state shared revenues. All of these are up this year. You can see from prior year. Our budget is $4 million, was $4 million for this year, but we're projecting it coming in at about $2 million and possibly more than that. Property taxes are coming in, is what our levy is. Our building permits, of course, everyone's aware that we had a little crash right after July 1st, and, but we are recovering slowly, and we continue to grow strong in getting our building permits back where they're supposed to be. In fact, next year, we're anticipating much stronger revenue streams. We had budgeted 1.2 million, but we're probably going to come in more, around $450,000. Our state shared revenues, what you see is what was budgeted at that certain point in time. After our budget was adopted, the state came in and revised their numbers. So your forecast is the reflected amounts that the state has given us. The auto license tax is going to probably come in just a little bit less, that's just an estimate. So if you look at our general fund, our revenues are up, and our expenditures are up just a little bit more, but we're probably going to come in about $500,000 under budget, and this is mainly due to the vacant positions that we had throughout the year. Now, this may change a little bit as we get toward year-end, because people tend to, emergencies happen to come up in the general fund, so we're anticipating, though, that we'll have a, we'll come in at least at budget or a little bit under. Our special revenue funds are our general capital. Our revenues are up, and our expenditures are down. So that is a, a good thing. We're banking money, but we have a lot of projects next year that we're looking, we'll be utilizing funds for that. Our construction tax is coming in based on probably a little bit more than what we anticipated at $155,000, but it's up from last year. Our food tax money is up slightly. This was one of the revenues that were targeted to be cut at the state level, but the issue was vetoed, so we'll have another year of food tax. Our highway user fund revenue is up slightly, about, well, about $300,000, and our expenditures are up a little bit also. Transportation excise tax, both revenue and expenditures are up. Special revenues, your 2021 excise tax monies, the only thing that's getting generated off of that is interest at the top, this moment. Our expenditures were budgeted at $4 million. To date, we've only expended about $310,000, but we will probably be spending the majority next year. Our ARPA funds, again, we have revenues of 1.7 million that is forecasted to be spent, and we've only spent 1.1 million of that. Now, our water fund, the revenues are up slightly, and expenditures are down from last year. Our wastewater fund, I had an arrow going the wrong way on this, I should have put it up. So we're up about $10,000 in revenues on this, and our expenditures are up due to the projects that we are currently spending money on. Sanitation fund, our sanitation revenue is up, and our expenses are up. So you can see, the forecast is that our expenses are going to exceed our revenues this year. Cash and bank, we have about $101 million in total of all, of the town cash accounts, with $85,433,000 being in the PFM investment account. And then we have our finance department activities. We're about at 65% completion of the budget, and the DIF study is ongoing. That draft should be coming at any time. We're just finalizing some last-minute details on it. We're implementing the new time and attendance system right now. The clocks have been installed, and the staff is working on loading the payment information into our pay codes. And in fact, we have a list of test employees that we're going to be starting, testing on in the next week. We're working on our procedure for electronic timekeeping at the moment, and it's very near completion. We're just ironing up some items on fire and police. The sanitation rates and fees were publicly noticed, and a public hearing was held on April 3rd, and there was no comment, so council refreshed, requested more information, and Carl brought that back to council, so we'll be revising some items in the code on that also. And the townwide fee study is completed and on this agenda for consideration and approval if council so chooses to do so, which they did, and we're looking forward to implementation. Thank you. Do you have any questions at all?
Are there any questions for Ms. Jimenez? No, but we would like to thank you for always putting together a very informative presentation, as well as in the in-betweens, always being available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item number seven, which is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member, remember, the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A, authorization to purchase a new case, 580 SN, extend a HO with CAB through the Source Well Cooperative Contract, 032119-CNH, in an amount not to exceed $137,201.65. B, approval of scope of work and contract to Wilson and Company for the necessary engineering to complete the Hunt Highway and Addaway Road intersection improvements, in the amount Item C, approval of the April 3rd and 17th, 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item D, receive and file the following board and commission minutes. One, March 1st, 2023 Historic District Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes. Two, March 16th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda this evening. Is anybody in the public or online, or our council, wish to have anything removed? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is new business, resolution number 1868-23, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence approving and adopting the Pinal County Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we have before you tonight is an action item for us to discuss, the adoption of the Pinal County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Just a brief history, over the last, say, three years, even a little bit beyond that, Public Works, the Development, and the Fire Department have worked closely with Pinal County Emergency Management to be a part of the process to develop this plan. And as Mr. Rounds was saying just a while ago, this is an example of regional collaboration to identify hazards that are similar between jurisdictions, but also to dial down to our local level to identify those areas that need to be improved for our citizens or, or hazards towards our citizens, which allows us to, you know, this is the identification process of that, but gives us the ability to start working towards mitigation strategies which, which will give us access to work through even at the federal level when it comes to funding of some of these programs. So this, this plan has already been adopted by Pinal County, and is accessible to the public to be able to view through our Public Works, or our Public Works page on the town website under Emergency Management. I will say that the operation manager for Pinal County Emergency Management, Courtney Prock, was with us tonight in the audience, but unfortunately, she had a family emergency she had to step out for, so she would have been available to answer any questions, but I'm, I'm here, so if you, if there's any questions that I could answer for you.
Counsel, are there any questions? Seeing none? Thank you for your presentation. If there's no questions, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 18623, a resolution of the Town of Florence, approving and adopting the Pinal County Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B is discussion approval/disapproval to enter into a cooperative use contract with Holbrook Asphalt Company using the City of Mesa Cooperative Contract Number 2022159, pavement preservation services that expires June 30th, 2023, in an amount not to exceed Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. A real quick, looking back, 2016, we were approximately somewhere along the lines of about 11 to 12 years behind in our pavement maintenance program, specifically with Anthem. To this day, this, this approval now will get us through every subdivision that has been built through 2020. So we're just a little over two years in the rears now, and we usually don't do it the very first year the subdivision is built, because of all the construction that goes on on the vertical side and the damage that typically occurs. So we let that warranty period run out, and then afterwards. So truly, we're only about a year, year and a half behind. Again, this is a product we've been using exclusively since the beginning of Anthem. The product is designed to protect from ultraviolet rays, essentially damaging the asphalt road, as well as a, a very thin wearing course, and the town's been very happy with the performance of this product over all the years. For that, are there any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Salas? Seeing none, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve to enter into a cooperative use contract with Holbrook Asphalt Company.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, discussion approval/disapproval of entering into a cooperative use contract for on-call repair and maintenance services with Ellison Mills Construction, in the amount not to exceed $350,000, with an expiration date of April 30th, 2026, with two optional one-year extensions.
So since the beginning of my time here in the Town of Florence, we've had some type of JOC contractor onboard to specifically help with both water and wastewater improvements and/or maintenance. Sometimes the maintenance projects are, are too large for staff to actually take on and/or have a negative impact on staff. So for certain projects, we'd like to utilize, specifically, again, if it's a maintenance project that doesn't require design, that would be very difficult to hard bid, we prefer to have a JOC contractor come in and perform this type of work. The contractor we've been utilizing, I think, since about 18, so about five years now. We've had very good luck, and they, they perform a multitude of services. They do a certain amount of excavation, a certain amount of paving, water lines, wastewater lines, as well as plant improvements, lift stations, odor control, they do a number of things, and we just like to have this contractor available if and when we need it as an on-call service. Again, it'd be great if we didn't need him for the next two or three years, but if we need him, it helps us expedite being able to get through the necessary repairs and/or modifications.
All right, counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we need a motion.
I make a motion we enter into a cooperative use contract for on-call repair and maintenance services with Ellison Mills Construction, in the amount not to exceed $350,000, with an expiration date of April 30, 2026, with two optional one-year extensions.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item D, resolution number 1869-23, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending the Florence Town Council Rules of Procedure effective June 1st, 2023. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, members of the council, from time to time, and especially after our elections, we adopt new rules of procedures for the council. You'll remember, we've had this conversation, and your concepts have been included. So what we have is, we have very few additions. Those are, under item 2.6, meetings, we're adding in that if a member of the council's camera is off, it's the same as merely stepping off the dais. Under 2.14, Zoom, we're adding in that a council's regular and special meetings are broadcast via Zoom to allow for public participation. Item B, town council work sessions may be held via Zoom, but will be not, will not be broadcast for public viewing. The public will have the right to attend the Zoom meeting in this council chambers and to view it on screen. Zoom meetings may be called as situations arise, and the town manager has the authority to call them. Town council may Zoom for executive session. Care should be taken that the, the session remains confidential. Under 4.5, meetings open to the public, we've added YouTube, florencearizona.gov TV, or Zoom. Chat features are disabled during meetings that are open to the public. Under item C, the following rules have been established for participating by technology means. Item one, Town of Florence Remote Public Participation Guidelines and Informations. Item I, in-person speakers signed up to do comments will be called upon first by the presiding officer to speak. Following the public Zoom, our phone participants wishing to speak may make comments. Item two, Zoom and phone speakers will be called on in the order that they raise their hand. Item three, to provide public comment via Zoom, you must be registered using your full and last name. Zoom users joining by alias will not be called upon to speak. Item four, alternatively, you can offer verbal comments by calling or using the phone numbers and webinar ID on a public agenda where it does not require Zoom registration. You will be asked to state your name in full prior to commenting. Item five, regardless of whether you participate via phone, computer, tablet, or mobile device, please participate from a quiet environment so that the council, board, commission committee can hear you when you're called upon to speak by the presiding officer. If you are using the internet to connect to the meeting, try to ensure that you have a good connection or strong signal. And these are what the citizens will see as they log into a Zoom meeting or electronic meeting. Consent agenda, we've added that items for public works are either less than five hundred thousand to be added onto the consent agenda, and final perks may be added to the consent agenda. And we've just added authorized by the presiding officer under business items and action items. And so that is what has been added to your rules of procedure. If you'd like more consideration, we'd be happy to take this back for further consideration of council, or we can adopt it tonight. If it's adopted tonight, it has a thirty-day waiting period, so it would be effective on the June first meeting.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the items that were presented?
Lisa, could you please just refresh my memory? Because I, at the moment, can't remember. What is the current consent agenda dollar amount for expenditures?
Under the general fund, it's expenditures, consent agenda may be expenditures that are under one hundred thousand dollars. But underneath the items for public works areas, that would be water, wastewater, and public works, it would be under five hundred thousand maybe on the consent agenda. Counsel, where the public still has the opportunity to remove any item from the consent agenda at the time that the item is called.
Did that answer your question?
All items were a hundred thousand. Now we've got, we're going to five hundred thousand. Yes.
But just to clarify, it's five hundred thousand for public works? It's not for all general funds?
No, just public work items and, and not. And those will only be those items that are budgeted as well.
Thank you for clarifying.
I had one other just point I wanted to bring in. Just, I'm not sure how we would change it or if we need to change it. But I know personally, two times when we've had like a meeting with all of us on council via Zoom, I believe it might have been like an executive session, and my camera, like my Zoom did not work on my computer. It was having some issues. So I ended up calling in on a telephone. Under the rules, the way they're written, A, would I be allowed, or any member be allowed to participate? Because I noted that it stated that any member that didn't have their camera on would be counted as stepping away from the dais. So I just want to clarify that.
That is, for Zoom, people do have the right to attend via telephonic measures. And that is per the state statute.
All right, I just wanted to make sure of that because obviously participating is important.
Just to clarify, if you're on Zoom and your camera doesn't work, you can't participate via Zoom. You'd have to pick up the telephone to participate via telephone because otherwise you're considered walking off the dais.
This was rules and regulations that the council discussed, and it was, it was at a time to where Zoom was a new technology, and everybody was using Zoom. And we had an instance where someone was still logged in, but yet they were not available. So they said that if, if a person takes off their phone, they will be considered the same as if they walked off the dais.
That's fine, we can still call in?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was also to verify, to visually be able to verify that you were in executive session and there was no one else within the room. That was the other reason why it was implemented. Where if you're on the phone, it, it's pretty clear that it's just you on the phone. But if you're on your thing and your camera is off, we can't verify that there's not somebody sitting there with you listening to the meeting. That was the, the reasoning, as well as at the time that you were logged in and left without, and we could not reach that person any longer.
That's correct.
Counselor Member Bucholato. Thank you for waiting.
I was just wondering if you could kind of explain where people could come in here and watch the Zoom meeting? If you could just clarify that a little bit? Because I still have some questions about that.
So council meetings are open to the public. And underneath the rules and regulations this council chose to have them is special meetings and regular meetings. The public has a right to appear, and the public has a right to speak. And that would be at your call to the public or at your public hearings. Underneath a work session, the public has a right to attend, but does not have a right to speak underneath our rules. And, and during that time, it means that we also don't have an IT staff filming. And so, and we're not signed up for that. So what we can do is, we can, in order to have the public participate, to not air and broadcast via Zoom, they would be allowed to come in, and they'd be allowed to sit in the meeting. There would be the Brady Bunch squares on the screen. Everybody could watch, the same as if you were having a live meeting in person. And they would still be able to view the meeting as if the work session was happening live. We just want to have a form to where the public has the ability to watch a Zoom session if needed. We are beyond the COVID years, so we have not had to have a Zoom work session. We don't know what the future holds, so we just want to be prepared and understand the rules for if we have to go in and do another one.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. It's open for a motion. Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is our legislative report. Mr. Jeff Graves.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. It is the one hundred and eleventh day of the legislative session, which is once again adjourned until Wednesday, while the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors continues to consider candidates to fill two vacant seats in L D twenty-six and L D thirteen. With these vacancies, legislative activity has slowed to a basic halt over the last couple of weeks. And without a Republican majority, they have not been able to move forward on any of the more controversial bills, such as revenue bills, corporate, corporate tax cut, or zoning bills. Last week, the chamber did meet to hear a handful of bills, but H B twenty-five oh nine, which Mr. Rounds mentioned, the tamale bill, which sought to expand the list of Arizona's cottage foods to include time and temperature-controlled items, that ended up dominating the bulk of last week's activity as Republicans attempted to override the governor's veto of that bill. Democrats were originally on board with this plan because the bill did pass with super majorities in both the House and Senate. However, the Democratic caucus ended up sticking with the governor and reversed course, which unfortunately is exacerbating political divides at a time when the legislature ought to be coming together to work on the budget. So we don't have any new details regarding the state budget or any updated timeline. And so with that, we're just waiting for those vacancies to be filled so the legislative session can move forward. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Graves? Thank you for the update. Item ten is department reports. Did any member have any question for any of the department heads?
I do.
Vice, Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the updates. I requested them last time, and I've seen that the updates are in red. So it makes it a lot easier to know what's happening current. So thank you.
Counsel, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, was it me?
Yes. Oh, sorry. I have a question, because I'm not sure who to direct it to, actually. The community event that was this weekend with the trash service, being able to pick up appliances and things like that, who was in charge of that? Who's going to take claim for that?
I'll try to answer any questions I can.
Not so much a question, I have some suggestions. So I actually went. I just had a TV and two computer shells to get rid of. So I don't know if anyone else attended, but it was very difficult to know where they were because there was no signage. The flyer said they would be at Heritage Park, which generally means in the parking lot, not behind a gate that normally is closed to the public, back, and we had to drive back. Even without the wind that day, it is ridiculously dusty back there. And so you have cars coming in, having to turn around and back up. And I had to watch these poor people put shirts over their faces to avoid the dust. And when we were doing the cemetery this weekend, the allergies, the allergens, is, like, my allergies have been a mess since then. So I simply, I felt bad for these people that were there. It was hot, not a good place. I would highly recommend we move it back into the parking lot. I understand that there's games and things, but at no time during any game on a weekend will we ever take up that entire parking lot. The only time that parking lot is completely full is when there's an event. If we can't have it there, can we move it over to here? They did complain about it, and, you know, they were, they were, there were people that were working that said they probably would not want to work that again. So if we want to make sure that we can offer that to our people, we want to make sure that we're also taking care of the people that are there, working to help our community be a better place. So that was just my only suggestion, is that we move it to a different place and that we have signage, because there was no signs. And had I just not happened to see their bright orange shirt, I would have never have known where to go, and I would have left. So I wonder how many people went with the intentions to drop off stuff, couldn't figure out where it was, and then left. And then to our citizens, please, please, please make sure you thoroughly read the flyer because there were many people who tried to dump off paint, and paint was one of the items that was not allowed. And so just make sure that you're aware of what can be dropped off so that you don't get there and then get frustrated because they're not going to take what you brought. Those are my suggestions. Thank you. It was a great event, though. I appreciate it.
Rad did reach out this morning and let us know that the dust was a problem. They moved it from where they were supposed to. I got to get with Parks and why that happened. But last year, where it was, they moved it back about a hundred feet. So the, you couldn't see it from driving down Main Street where you could last year.
My understanding was it was because of Little League softball, whatever, T-ball, something like that. But even at that, that parking lot will never be that full to where those four trailers could not have been backed up into a little section of our parking lot, completely away from the dust. I, I would just ask that we never be in that section again because it's, it's just not, it's not a, it's like not even big enough to get in there. The way it was is they had the four trailers, and then you pull in and you wait until they tell you where to go, but you have to pay attention to the cars that are pulling out because there's not enough room for there to be cars backed up and cars coming in and trying to turn and back up as well. There's, it's, there's just not enough room back there on top of the dust. So yeah, I don't know, that was what I was told why it originally went back there. But I'm requesting it not be back there anymore.
Thank you.
All right, any other council members have any question for any department heads? Counselor Member Bucholato, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you for breaking down the code compliance. All the C Click Fix, they kind of compiled it into the March twenty-fifth through April seventeenth, what happened. And it's clear, it's consistent, and it shows how many are open, how many have, you know, went on in the process, and how many have been closed. So I like that you guys are being transparent on that. So thank you for doing that.
All right. I just wanted to say thank you as well, the department head reports. Everything that has already been said in regards to them, you hit the nail on the spot when you mentioned like the black and the red and all of the differences in between. And I also just want to communicate for anybody who's in the public, if you don't have, or if you, if you haven't already heard, anything that you really want to know about the town of Florence, you know, what businesses are coming in, what's going on with any of our departments? Our department had spent a lot of time putting all of their data and documentation into the reports, and it's all right there. For example, I did have a question on one of the businesses coming in because a lot of people have been asking me about the old Florence Tap House, and I haven't had an opportunity lately to touch base with the gentleman that's building. And in the report, I was able to see, oh, he's in the process of his small business loan. And this is where we are. So those updates are beneficial to everybody, and we always strive for transparency in government, so it's a great place to get your information because you know it's accurate. It's not a rumor that you hear on the street, which I did hear lots of rumors, and I debunked them all by reading the department head reports. Thank you.
Item eleven, town manager report.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Some good opportunities in the last couple of weeks to meet with some folks. Did again today, was in the East Valley, meeting with the other managers, which was very healthy for me. That was, their first meeting was my first day, so I did not get a chance to go to that a couple of months ago. So it was an opportunity to do that and opportunity to see folks from MAG as well as our league. Tom Belshi was there and gave a quick update as well. So that was a great opportunity for me today. It's quite a drive, but I appreciate that. The other opportunity more recently was with CAG. Stephanie, who's with CAG and is the economic development person, gave me an opportunity to, to go around with her and kind of see some of the things that are happening around. You saw what Jim Rounds was talking about and all of the different things that have happened in Pinal County. And she has some special insight to that. So that was a great opportunity last week that I had. So I'll give you a couple of updates as to kind of what I've been up to in that realm. Thank you.
This is our second call to the public. If you would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. I see one, Courtney Ramirez, online. Go ahead, Courtney.
How, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know what happened earlier. That was really odd. But I wanted to, first of all, thank you guys for even mentioning the dust tonight. We all know that I've been a little vocal about the home builders next door to our community at Centennial Park that have been blowing dust all over our neighborhood and surrounding areas for the last nine months. And this trash event at the park was just one day of, of dust. And I'm glad that you all brought that up because it, it is a problem. And I really hope that the town of Florence does what they can to prevent all these developers that are going to be coming in to, to enforce very strict dust policies so that we can maintain our health as much as we can without getting dusted out by them. So they have been much better over the last couple of weeks, so that's good. But it's taken nine months, which is really disheartening. And on another note, I wanted to briefly talk about the, you know, the, the whole three-minute mark with public comment. We're all busy. We all work, and sometimes two jobs, and then to sit at a meeting for two or three hours. But it's kind of the only time that the community can kind of get out and up here and, and speak during these public comments. And we understand, Mayor, it's, it's your call whether to let the resident continue or to silence them. And I, I'd really like your understanding and consideration to just let the people talk a little bit and finish what they have to say. Some things are really important, and I don't feel that we should be silenced. I watched a city council meeting at Globe last week, and the gentleman did a public comment talking about how wonderful it is to get their community... comment talking about how wonderful it is to get their community together and get them into the meetings. And the mayor let this gentleman talk for over five minutes without silencing him. And I would just like to see that within our town of Florence during these meetings. There's not many people that get up to speak, and to let somebody go over just a little bit, I don't think would be a problem. And I'd really like you guys to maybe switch that up a little bit and just give the people a couple of extra seconds to finish what they have to say. And the cemetery looks wonderful after all those trees. If we could just get some extra water out there, that would be amazing. And thank you for this opportunity, and I hope you guys all have a good evening.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Just to give a little bit of a response, we do always value hearing from all of our citizens. We try to make it equitable with the three minutes, because that way, if you have three minutes, you're not affording somebody more, you're not affording somebody less, you're keeping it consistent. We also, as a council, I know all of us have been and continue to make ourselves available, so if you have any questions or want to talk or meet, you have that opportunity, as well as if you don't, sending in any questions, comments through our town clerk or emailing us directly. I would like to, as we come into this next year, also continue to expand, you know, we're out of the COVID times, to have some, you know, open town halls, where we visit the different communities within our town boundaries, so that way we're going out, you know, Florence Gardens, let's go out and join them for coffee on Saturday, go up to the Anthem Ballroom. And this way, we're circulating around the community. For those that are unable to make it to these meetings on the first and third Mondays, we'll go to their communities on a day and time that works best for them. I think it's time to bring that practice back as well. That being said, call to the, oh, and cemetery. Councilmember Bucelado and Maldonado will be working with Ms. Garcia and Mr. Martin to set some days and times to have some work sessions. That being said, we have our call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Neal.
I did go to the cleanup, the graveyard cleanup. Had to clean up a couple of my family plots and then clean up some of the cemetery. I also was there for the tree planting. I think I would like to see the plaques for the trees, because I had no clue, I didn't hear anything about the plaques for the trees that you can buy. I think if we advertise that a little bit more, more people would get involved and buy more plots, because I didn't hear anything about it. Of course, I don't do Facebook, though, so I guess I'm in ancient times, because I'm not on Facebook no more. The rodeo grounds, a lot of good events. What they tell me was sheep riding, little kids riding sheep. Funny to me. They have a couple of those events coming up, so really like to see people get out to the rodeo grounds and support them. Other than that, that's all I have.
Councilmember Cortez.
I, along with Councilmember Neal and Councilmember, I was going to say Johnny's last name, so I was like, that's not the right person. With Mo, we did attend the cemetery. Those trees looked beautiful. It was so nice to drive in and just see that line of trees, and it looks beautiful. And I have to be honest, that was my first time ever being to the cemetery, because I've only been here nine years, so I don't have anybody there to go visit. But it's beautiful there. I love seeing how many people take great pride in their family's area, and they clean it. And while we were there, we were able to make suggestions about things that we thought, just being there and cleaning, that would be a great additions to make it easier for when a family member is there maintaining their plot and cleaning it. If you're going to go through the work of doing that, we should be good partners and help you make it easier for you to clean the spot as well. I had a great time with the kids, and I even made a bracelet with them. I always love to participate with the kids. Attended a couple other events within town. I won't say them all, because I don't want to steal from all my other council members. And then the Chamber is hard at work planning their events. They've got Casino Night coming up in July. They're talking about some great other things to bring to our community, like a women's empowerment-type meetings to go on and help women in business. So there's a lot of great things going on with the Chamber. If you're not a Chamber member, I encourage you to participate. You do not need to own a business in order to participate with the Chamber, so definitely some great things going on there. Other than that, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. The event at the cemetery was awesome. The trash event was still very awesome and very needed within our community, and I appreciate that. And maybe we could expand it even more and have more than one location. That would be great, too. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bucelado?
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that we had a great time at the Denim and Diamonds Ball at the Women's Club. Great, great singers up there. I didn't catch the name of the two gentlemen, but they were brothers, and they were really, really good. And it was just nice to see everybody come together and to support, you know, all the members there in that building. It was a great time, great food. We had it, well, they had it catered locally by the new barbecue place, Backyard Bones, Backyard Bones. I keep getting it all messed up, but there's a Bones, yeah, backyard barbecue. They catered it, and it was phenomenal. So I'm even more excited for it to open, and I can't wait for that to happen. And I do believe that they raised a good amount of money towards getting, matching the grants that they need. So it was a really, really, really good time. The cemetery, I unfortunately didn't get a go. Too many people already had the time off at my job, so I had to cover court that day. But I just wanted to say thank you to the council members and residents and community services that did get to go out there. It looks beautiful, and I know we have a long way to go, but it's a start. And with the work session coming up, we have to get together and figure out, you know, a time and a date still, but anybody that is passionate about the cemetery or wants to help with that, please make it a point to come to this work session. I also hope that, you know, some of the department heads that are over that area can attend as well, because there's a lot to do. A lot of residents have been going out there every week, cleaning it up, and the town has been really good about now on Mondays picking up the debris. So it's starting to show. It's starting to look a lot better, but we still have a long way to go in order to make it what it's capable of being. Another thing is Harvey, I went over to Western Crossings on Friday during my lunch, and I was kind of peeping on them, because they were putting in the wall, and I was just making sure that they were doing the best that they could to water down the dirt. And after every scoop of gravel, they were spraying it down, so it seemed as if that day they were in compliance. So it does appear that they are doing what they, you know, need to do. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. But other than that, just thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Larson.
And so again, I sort of echo the same sentiments. I know that there are so many events going on this past, what, couple of weeks even, that we're all sort of trying to hit different things and help out. So people who put the boots on the ground and picked up at the cemetery, I know that there's always work to be done out there, and I really appreciate you guys being able to make it out there. I did have the pleasure of going to Pinellas County's Victims Rights Week seminar, in which there was a panel, including Kent Volkamore, Jeff McClure, Mark Lamb, as well as Bruce Walls, our police chief, and then also the mayor and councilmember Bucelado. And it was a great opportunity for all of us to have a community discussion. There was a lot of members of the community who, it wasn't really the direction that I thought it might go, but it was a great conversation. And it talked about a lot of how we, as not only the county, but as town of Florence, can really come together and really help support our youth and not only deter crime, but build each other up as a community. We talked everything from infrastructure to education to really all aspects, sorry?
Roads.
And roads, yeah. Yeah, so we talked about really a whole host of issues. And the great thing was that it was a room full of people who are passionate about making our communities better. So I loved the discussion. I think even after that, we had a lot of great deep dives, and I look forward to where those conversations could lead to as well. So again, I think that as a community, we're all coming together, big and small, and I look forward to where that leads. That's all I have.
Vice Mayor? Oh, goodness gracious. Councilmember Maldonado, I love that you didn't wait until I got home.
It's all right. It's the glasses, I know. All right, so I just want to say I'm very proud of all those young men and women that raised their right hand. I remember when I did that, and some of these kids, it's very heartwarming knowing what they're getting themselves into. And just if they're listening to this, just come and see me, and I'll give you some tips on how to make it through basic training. Or Johnny, Johnny can give some tips, too. So I want to thank Chris Ellis and his folks that put that event together last Monday out at the library, that Arizona Water Awareness Month Community Open House. I know it's a mouthful. And it was our first one, and being part of the, this year and all this past years, with all the talk about water, I think it's a good start, getting folks aware of some of the stuff that we can do, either in our own homes or in our businesses, to try to conserve water. So I think this is a move in the right direction, and I hope next year, or whenever we have the next one, we can have more participation and have more, possibly not have the same event going on the same night, so we're not competing with another event, but still, that way we can get more folks out there, because water is very important. Everybody needs it, everybody knows they need it, and when you don't have it, then that's when you know you need it more. So also with that, we have the Cinco de Mayo event coming up this Friday at Padilla Park, so I'll be out there. Hopefully, some of my fellow members can come enjoy the Cinco de Mayo festivities out there. And thank you to Pinellas County Attorney Kent Volkamore. They did a really great job with the kickball tournament out there at Anthem last Friday. And I didn't expect to play, and I did play, and I had fun. I found out I'm not that great a kickball either. But I tried.
Where did the ball hit you?
Yeah.
He's still recovering.
I'm still recovering, so, but thank you, everybody, and enjoy the rest of the week.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I echo what everybody else has been saying. We're doing a good job as far as moving this town in the right direction. One thing I did notice, and I want to commend the staff for, including our hearing-impaired residents, I now noticed that we have closed caption in at the Road to Country Thunder, we had some signers out there helping out with getting the word out to our hearing-impaired residents. So thank you, staff, for getting that done and taking care of. And I do, I'll see you guys on Friday, Cinco de Mayo's back in Florence. So I hope to see everybody out there. Invite your friends, let them know that these little girls have been practicing their dances with their beautiful dresses, so come out and watch how they perform. I think we'll all enjoy it. Thank you.
All right. Well, I am going to be a mayor a few words this evening, because literally everything that I had jotted down, with the exception of a couple of the state committees seeking input from local municipalities for any policies or legislature that you want to bring forward for not this season, but in the next season. You know, we're always planning ahead in the area of budget, finance, economic development, community development, public safety. Please let me know, and I'll be happy to bring them forward. And recently, I had applied and was selected to serve on the Arizona Mayor's Educators' Roundtable, so I'm looking forward to continuing working with others to improve opportunities for our youth. Our council recently rejuvenated the Florence Teen Council, as everybody knows, and this weekend on Saturday, we're bringing them to a Arizona, I don't have my calendar in front of me, can you tell me what it was specifically called again, Ms. Garcia?
It is a leadership symposium, and it is going to be in the city of Castle Grand. And we'll be taking our kids, as well as Mayor Walters, Councilmember Cortez, Jeff Graves, and myself will be attending.
Yes. And then also an exciting opportunity, Ms. Smith reached out from the Pinellas County Attorney's Office, and also has further additional opportunities for our youth. So just want to say thank you to everybody for all of their input and involvement. Councilmember Maldonado, I'm sorry that I missed you, it was just the angle. So I'm glad that you spoke, it was insightful. That being said, the time is 8:29 PM, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.